Okay, well, it's five o'clock and I'd like to welcome you to the monthly meeting of the Active School Committee, Thursday, May 11th, 2023. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have some adjustments to our agenda tonight, Ms. Ross?
Yes, we do, and they're right up front there, the comment, right after comments to the public, celebration of learning. I'm going to turn it over to the Girl Scouts for some exciting news, and then after that, I have a brief award to give out, and then we'll move into celebration of learning for the book fair with Jen Goodwin. So we really have three celebrations of learning tonight.
All right.
Okay.
So the Girl Scouts are up right here?
Right after comments from the public.
The comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the Girl Scout celebration.
Amanda Wunschel is with us, and Amanda was kind enough to send me an email, which I shared with some people, and I'm very proud of the Girl Scouts in Acton, and I said, Amanda, can you just, can you come in on Thursday night? She said, I can, and I'm going to bring some friends. I'm going to turn it over to her.
I'm so happy to share, and I'll pass this out for you guys. Our Girl Scouts are featured in our monthly Girl Scout magazine.
Awesome.
Our girls participated in a program called Cards for Hospice, where they created Valentine cards for folks on Beacon Hospice Center. There's three facilities across the state, so we got to send those out. They're really cool. So I'll show you guys just the one that took these. Yeah, it's so cute. I'm just really proud of the work that they did and all the efforts that they put in. So we have eighteen girls, thirteen of Winter students here at AES, and then we've got three homeschoolers and a couple from another district as well.
Great.
That's awesome. Who do we have here with us this evening?
Yes, we've got our daisies. We have Kenzie, Maddie, and Marion's one of our grannies.
Yay, welcome, everybody, tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for that kind of recognition that you're in the magazine. Celebrity, that celebrity status, really. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you for having us and allowing us to share any excitement.
Yes, well, thank you for sharing that with us. Yeah.
You know, and I don't know whether they do this anymore, and I hate to say the year 1956.
What?
They had a national roundup of all the Girl Scouts. I was lucky enough to go with the group to Michigan. There were five thousand of us. It was really quite the experience, and I think they stopped there for a few years because they couldn't afford it, but it always has stuck in my mind.
Yeah. Pretty great experience.
Yes.
Great job, girls.
Good job, Ross. If we could, Amanda, what we could do is maybe Mike has his cell phone. He'll take a good snapshot of this article, and I'd like to put it on our, with your permission, because this is Girl Scouts, can we put it on our AES webpage?
Yes, our girls have signed photo releases, so we can.
We can do that. That would be great, and we'll put it out there as a big shout out to you guys. Awesome, thanks so much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Really, really excited.
I hate to just run and split, but we, all of us have to go to baseball.
Yeah, yeah, right, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good to you.
I wonder if the newsletter comes via email, like a digital, and then you can click on it.
I don't know, I never, I never got it digitally. When Quinn was registered, I would get it every month in the mail, too, but I.
Amanda, do you know if it comes digitally, that newsletter somehow?
It is on the Girl Scouts Newsroom website.
So maybe we can click on that picture and hit save as, and there'll be a better picture?
It might be. I don't know how quickly they release it, because I looked the other day, and it wasn't up just yet, but I just got it in the mail back.
Okay.
It might be up now.
Whatever, maybe Mike can work magic.
Wait for a minute while Mike takes a picture.
Oh, good, he used the color for coffee, too. Excellent.
Sometimes a picture with your camera is better.
Yeah. There we go. Thanks again for coming tonight. So I have another celebration of learning. So Jim Driscoll reached out to me and couldn't be here tonight, and asked, can you get this on the agenda? And I said, absolutely. So I want to speak a little bit to the Community Spirit Award, and this is what Jim, Jim would be doing this a few years here, so I'm in place of Jim. The Community Spirit Award is given annually to a member of our community who sets high standard for service, encourages a sustained commitment to civic participation, and inspires others to make service a central part of their lives. The Spirit Award is to celebrate people in our small town who exemplify or inspire the positive values and behaviors that define the town of Acton Spirit. Recipients of this award are characterized by an extraordinary generosity, given their time and abilities. The award winners have all one, have one thing in common, they all have one thing in common, and that is a generous commitment to their community, finding time to make a difference in the lives of neighbors, residents, and those they interact with on a daily basis. Andy Brazier demonstrates kindness, helpfulness, and generosity with everyone he meets. Andy is the epitome of what the word "community" stands for. Congratulations to Andy for being and earning the 2022 What's Up in Acton Award. Very much deserved. I'm going to need another photo from somebody, maybe Mike, you can help us out one more time.
Patty's ready.
Patty's ready, come over here, buddy.
All right.
Okay, Andy Brazier, your generous commitment, your time, and inspiration towards the Acton community, to the What's Up in Acton Community Spirit Award.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, we'll wait for the camera, there's Andy, everybody, rock and roll. That is awesome, awesome, awesome. And not lastly, but Jennifer, do you need this?
I do.
Okay, I'm going to move, then our celebration of learning this evening is Jen Goodwin. For the seven years I've been here, I've been doing two book fairs a year, fall and spring, tirelessly. She does a wonderful job, and I thought, you know, I don't think we've ever had her do celebration of learning before, and we just ended under the sea, so the truck came today.
It sure did.
Yep, so I thought, what a nice time to have Jen talk a little bit about the book fair, what it means to the community, and the work that she does for us.
Great. So the book fair, like John said, happens twice a year. It's been my baby for sixteen years now, I believe, was under Susan Onion, and she always just handed it off to me, and it's just been my, my baby. Every book fair, I do a different theme. Scholastic used to do themes, they stopped doing that, but the kids love the different theme. They get excited because I dress up for the theme, and sometimes there's some wackadoodle outfits going on, but kids love it, and that's what's most important, is just seeing their excitement. I try to make sure that every student within our school leaves here with something, so you know, that's an important piece to our community. The Fall Book Fair is just a profit for the school, and the Spring Book Fair is a nonprofit for the school, and just to give back to the community, so that's a vogue book fair. Everything here is buy one, get one free, so that's, that's always fun, trying to help kids understand that, yeah, you can get another one for free. And, you know, sometimes there's a little six-year-old crying and saying, but I just got everything I wanted, and I go, but it's free. So it is, it is my passion, and I love it, so I did do a little short video for you.
Hit the lights.
We expected nothing less from the media tech.
I like the books at the book fair. I like the posters. I think when at the book fair, getting stuff for my family. What I love about the book fair is that it's something that we can all have in common that we like. My favorite thing about the book fair was buying stuff. The book fair is all the good choices. My favorite thing about a book fair was buying books that I very like. My favorite thing about the book fair was I get to buy toys and books. My favorite thing out the book fair was looking out cool books, and I really liked it. My favorite thing about the book fair was you get to buy cheer pens. My favorite book fair is looking at cool things, and like everything has. I like the book fair because you, there's a lot of books. I love the book fair because I get to bring books.
The thing that I like best about the book fair is seeing kids' precious little faces with each different theme, how excited they are, watching them sit and look at book choices, coming back later and talking to me about the books that they got, and parts of the books that they loved, sometimes read sharing with them. So the book fair is awesome, and it's a lot of work, but it is super fun and a great part of Acton Elementary.
Can I share my favorite thing about the book fair?
I know.
It hasn't changed since the eighties.
The book fair takes me approximately three to four hours to set up, and again, the same amount to tear back down. So it is a huge commitment, and it is a solo thing, because I feel like now I finally have it down pat to boom, boom, boom. But I do do a lot with decorating, and I think that it makes a huge difference. Our sales have improved, like doing that, that putting in that little bit of extra work really makes a difference to our kids and to our community.
Do we earmark where the, the book fair money goes to books, or?
So the book fair money, I take it in Scholastic dollars, because if I do, then fifty percent of the sales go back to the school to help the, the book fair, help the library budget. So that's fantastic, and again, the sales are high enough now that even our Spring Book Fair, we still get a chunk of money, and Scholastic still contacts me and says that Acton Elementary School, for a tiny school, is rock star in it.
That's great.
And, you know, they are, they are impressed with the efforts that are put in, so.
So when you said three to four hours to set up, that's not with decorations?
That's, that's decorating, that's everything.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, it takes about three to four hours to decorate, to do the whole thing, get everything set up and prepared, and, and again, the same amount approximately to tear back down on a Friday night. So, yeah, two Friday nights, and.
What kind of attendance do you have from the outside?
Great attendance. Family night is, is usually very busy, and, and it's just fabulous, the, the amount of students, and, you know, I do have my little, my little sheet, making sure that I'm marking, like, okay, so-and-so didn't get a book, and how can I make sure that they do, and, you know, just making sure that we reach, we reach everybody.
And you have a plan, obviously you have a plan, but you have a, sorry, you have a budget to provide something to everybody?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. And it's, it's just a, it's a beautiful thing for Acton School and for our community.
I agree, thank you.
Awesome job.
Thank you, Jen.
We still have a couple friendly fish still here.
We do. The kids asked me to leave them up for the remainder of the year, and I said, absolutely. There they are.
Walk over there and then way over there.
That's the thing up there.
Yeah, I couldn't find it because my glasses were with it. Is the person on Scooby Doo is always getting lost without her glasses, Thelma?
Oh, Velma.
Do you feel like that?
Right when the bad guy comes, she loses her glasses.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to number four, with Patty for progress monitoring with iReady reading.
So did you turn that off, Jen?
I did, sorry. Yep, absolutely.
So I decided to look at the iReady reading diagnostic because K to four took, uh, K to five took it, and they were all set for math. Mr. Noel asked to do an end-of-the-year diagnostic for six and seven, so probably what I'll do is end up in June reporting out all the math.
Yep.
Wait, did you push it again?
No, I didn't.
There's a little flashy one, too.
Now, gee, you see? That is not OSHA.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, here's where Mike uses the OSHA-proof chair on TV.
I'm gonna have to cut that out, tell you right now.
I will say, when I decorate, I get the ladder.
And a safety harness.
You put, you put there, no, it's just often on too fast.
Speaking of decorations, the PTG did a great job of decorating outside this week for Teacher Appreciation Week.
That's exactly right.
Beautiful job, amazing.
All right. I don't have kids in here telling me what the numbers are. They're very good about it. All right, so I found a handy-dandy little graphic that I thought would be, I mean, it doesn't look alike much, but we talked about this in the springtime, I mean, in the fall, when we really first looked at this. The green is where we want them, the yellow is in progress, the red is more of a beginning. So you'll see over here kindergarten rocked it in a lot of areas in the fall, and look at the green expansion over here in the spring. So those were super, super impressive. A lot of their phonological awareness and the phonics piece comes from the Jolly Phonics program that they do, and we actually went to, two of the, the two first grade teachers and I went to Falmouth, and they were really pushing on, yeah, you need a really good phonics program. I said, yeah, we're good with that, we're all set with the phonics piece. So first grade in the fall had some red patches, which is normal and expected. In the spring, we're seeing none, we're seeing the bands of green much longer than they were before, so there's been a lot, a lot of good progress with this program, and it was just a pilot. So putting this in place next year, full on with the books that go with it, and all of the parts and pieces is going to be huge, so, and that is the plan. So second grade, if you look at their fall score, they had quite a bit of red, and Mr. D has knocked it out of the park, and we now have very small pieces of red. Comprehension with informational text, I'll tell you, is very hard for kids, and so to see his band go down to this small was, was really impressive. And the vocabulary, which is not something that always gets put into a reading program in, in a way that, that creates this strength, with this program, it's, it's in there, and you know, the kids did a really great job with that piece. Third grade, again, had a long bands of red. Their bands of red are still there in the springtime, but they're less, and they are different, and they are a focus. So that, that's something that I would work with the fourth grade teacher on next year and say, let's look at where the bands are. So all of this information, I've gathered their fall, winter, spring scores, and where they have challenges, and will work with, with next year's teachers on that piece, so.
Now, this, this grade had the Jolly Phonics?
This grade was beyond Jolly Phonics, so that's a good question, Mary, because Jolly Phonics is working its way up through, it's like when you start a program, you're waiting for that first class that started it right from the beginning, right in kindergarten.
And that was our second graders.
I believe you are correct.
Yeah.
So, so next year, it will be interesting to see what third grade looks like, and my hope, I'm working with the consultant for iReady, there's a magnet program, which is an upgrade from what we have right now. It includes a phonics piece. K two doesn't need magnet, because they've got Jolly Phonics in place. What I want to do is look and see if we can do magnet in three, four, and five within the budget that we have, and they're very good. They've given us some pretty good deals, I've been very happy with, with Julian, what they've done for us. If I can get magnet in three, four, and five within our budget, then they would have an additional phonics piece, and it is, it is an upgrade. So fingers crossed, I'm trying to see what we can do with that, and that would give them a bump, too. So fourth grade, they still have a little bit of red for spring, but it's in different places, it's less, and I was happy to see the green expand on that. And then we have fifth grade. These are both fifth grades. Still, you know, you can see comprehension on informational text, it's that hard one, but it's one that we would, that I would say with the teachers next year, let's work on that. Green bands are much longer in a lot of areas here. So takeaways and reminders, at this point, of the hundred and forty-one students who took this diagnostic test, only twelve students dropped from their fall to spring scores, which is pretty impressive. The range of growth was from plus one to plus one hundred and seventeen points, so, and they were like all over the place, but there were a lot of them forty, fifty, and sixty points of growth, which was really nice to see. Thirty-five of them met their target growth, so they set a target score for them, and just like we did with our NWEA, we're looking for this much growth, so eventually they're going to be where they need to be. So thirty-five of them met their target growth, forty-six of them surpassed their target growth and met their stretch growth. This means that eighty-one students of the hundred and forty-one who tested met or exceeded their growth expectation. So for a pilot program, coming in here brand new, that, that was impressive, and the teachers are in love with the program, which also makes them happy. So all students are actively using their iReady pathway, so just like math, filling in the holes with a pathway, they also have a pathway with this program that is filling in holes that they might have in their language arts. So iReady, both math and reading, will be available for students to use all summer long, that's the other piece. Mike has it all set so that in summer programming, we can use it if we need it, and at school, at home, that they can use it if, if that's something that, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard, kids need a break, but you know, a few minutes, you know, half an hour a week even would, would help. So that's a reminder for, for parents, and that's something teachers will, will let them know, too. So that was, I was really excited, I'm really excited to see it fully implemented with all the books and all the bells and whistles that the teachers need to make it a successful program. And it does have a writing component, too, up through second, up through online, starting at second grade, there's a writing component, so that's an added little, little bit, so. That was, that was the, the kids and the teachers and all the amazing work that they do.
That's awesome.
It looks great.
I was happy.
Nice to see, nice to see the growth, really good to see the growth.
Yeah.
Because it's, yeah, it's such a, such a time in the pandemic, that it's nice to see now that we're getting, getting that great back.
Yeah, well, their reading is as much of Swiss cheese as their math is in some places, so we'll just fill the holes.
Yeah, but they're actually starting Jolly Phonics in pre-K now, aren't they?
Yes.
So, because during that hybrid COVID year, Heather Levick, who's a pre-K teacher, was moved up to kindergarten, and then when she moved back, she said, I really think these kindergarten, these pre-K students can do it. So they brought it down, so like Theo's class is in kindergarten, that's why there's so much green in kindergarten, I think, was because they started it last year, so this is their second year of doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It shows that the kid's growth is a reflection of the teachers' efforts.
Absolutely.
You know, Patty's leadership and the teachers rolling up their sleeves and giving it their all, I mean, this is, this is great. I was just looking at the colors, not even the numbers. When I see less red, that's awesome, and places where red just completely disappeared shows that the teachers are not going to die. Kids are responding to the instruction, which is what we want.
And it's good that the research was done to bring in this particular program, because it's obviously a very successful program, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, Patty, for that report, very uplifting and encouraging So now we'll move on to number five, which is a consent agenda, and I'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
By Mary, seconded by CJ, all in favor? Five, no. Okay, now we'll go to the superintendent's report.
Very brief, I have four quick things. The first one is, we are on our, we just completed our second-to-last full staff Alice training with Officer Joe Gourdein out of the Sanford Police Department, he's doing a great job with us. We covered counter, which is part of Alice, C and Alice's counter, and we went over some of that, age-appropriate, what counter looks like, distracting, any kind of issues that might happen in the building. We are going to finish the last Wednesday of the month with all staff and kind of round out our, our learnings and practice some things as a school community, and then, as I mentioned to you before, in the fall, I'll have a comprehensive kind of safety plan I'll share with you, and have you bless that as a school committee, and then probably have a parent form as we open to have them understand some of our new processes and how safe, like we, as I said before, there's kind of funny terms, and we've hardened the school, it's much harder to get in and out of here, and we've done some things that I've shared before to make the school a harder place to access, along with our training as professionals, we're giving a lot more of the decision-making in emergencies and evacuations to the staff, to make the right call, given on the circumstance, and it's all fluid, depending on the situation. And I think the parents would be interested in that. It's not, now's not the time, but we'll be much more well-versed after we practice some of this in the fall, so I'd like to do that in the fall. The other one is the main three-year assessment, two of the three assessments have been completed this week, and Patty's done a great job, it's brand new to us, she's been our test coordinator, coordinated everything, and the staff has been remarkable, and the fact that it seems, I'm sure there were hiccups along the way, but not of any scale where it's like, this is. scale where it's like, this isn't going to work. Technology's worked great, the teachers have been super flexible in that we needed to get our test window in in the morning, so we've changed our cohort meeting times. Like one of the tests was on Tuesday, and that's when we meet. So the specialists were being super flexible, and the six through eight, along with the lower grades, were able to move some things around so that when you walk in the building, if you were to swing a right, you could have heard a pin drop in that hallway for two and a half hours. Like it was a very good test environment. We had a lady from the state here today. Did you de, I'm putting you on the spot, was there any debrief, any feedback to you at all from her, or is that coming later?
So she, her feedback to me was that she did not see anything that was untoward in our testing, that everything looked like it was going well. She talked with some of the kids, basically what they're doing is the state's paying a lot of money for this test, and they want to make sure that it is good for the kids and that it's good for the teachers. So right now, it's like NWEA testing on steroids, because it's the same kind of a format, but there were more tools for them to use, there was a lot to it. And there was a lot of security around.
Yeah.
You know, I had to lock up the tickets, I had, you know, I could make the tubs of stuff to go to each classroom, but every night before I left, they had to go in the conference room, the door locked and stuff. It was like back when they did the MEAs. So science is next week, and it is three 60-minute sessions. So they will be doing that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Fifth and eighth grade only.
Fifth and eighth grade.
So that's the science, it used to be the science augmentation in the MEAs.
But, yeah. Yeah, the specialists were amazing. They, you know, wiggled the schedule for us so that we could have a two-hour chunk. I think Dr. Lewis, the woman who came from the state today, was pretty impressed by that. And what she, what I've asked the teachers to do is to debrief with the kids, find out what worked for them, what didn't, what did they like. None of them liked the reading, the passages were way too long, and Dr. Lewis was finding that and that there were too many of them, because she's been in other schools, too. So they're gathering this information and they will have NWEA make adjustments as necessary. I'll debrief with the teachers on Wednesday to find out what did and didn't work, and then I told her I would send that information to her, so.
We have a number of trained proctors, teachers, and of course, the support staff. And ed techs were key with smaller groups that needed individual testing situations in small groups, as well as the support staff and the specialists were proctors in case somebody got sick and had to call out. We could move one of those people into the testing and move a substitute to somewhere else, like into a specialist classroom, and we could use a specialist or an ed tech. They could do something else, and we could bring the ed tech in to help support. So we had more than enough help, which was great.
Had a comment from over here.
Yeah, was this just for the middle school, the testing?
No.
For the whole school?
Three through eight.
Is that on the calendar of the school family? Or was there ever a notice sent out to parents?
Oh, sure.
A letter went home.
So grades three through eight, so you have a second grader and a sixth grader. So your sixth grader, that should have generated a letter to you and James.
We did not get a letter.
Okay, I'm just saying that, that was planned.
And like no email was sent out from the teacher. Like definitely communication in the middle schooling could be a lot better for.
Yeah, just, I hear you, but I'll tell you why.
I mean, obviously, my student told me that the testing was going to happen, and but just, I don't know, just a heads up to the parents, to let them know, hey, this week we have tests, make sure that you have a good breakfast, you know what I mean? I feel like.
Sure. So there's a, there was a letter that was, there's a letter that went out by the state, and then I added a piece to it that went out. It wouldn't have come, it's not the middle, it's not of the middle school teachers, it wouldn't have come from them, they don't do that, they're proctor. So it went out, why you didn't get it, Liz, I don't know. This is the first I've heard of somebody not knowing about it.
Does the state send a letter to every?
The state sends a letter to us, and we send it out.
Yeah, like it came home in Quinn's folder.
Yeah, so, but it's, sometimes I can reword it and make it, but this was, there was a lot.
Yeah.
And it was a brand-new test, so I added a letter from me about, you know, they can't bring their cell phones. A lot of kids have smartwatches, so just to let parents know, hey, on these days, they can bring their smartwatches and cell phones to schools, but understand with this test security, we can't have those on your wrist. I mean, we couldn't even have, there's things in this room that are considered aids for reading and stuff. In our rooms, we literally, in the classrooms, they either put up banners that were encouragable, like you can do this, and you've got this to cover those aids on the wall, or black tablecloths in some places, so that, that's how finite the rules were, and that's why we had the lady from the state here. So, yeah, we definitely had to tighten things up for this test. That's why I didn't, I sent the letter and then my little piece about smartwatches and cell phones.
Sent the letter in the mail or via email?
No, it went, it went home with the.
How did you get yours? CJ's a parent.
In Quinn's folder.
Okay, so yours was in her folder, the other ones would have gone out for the older kids electronically.
I made 150 copies, got them all.
In the middle school, we find a lot of kids early in the.
I know, that's why I think a lot of, you're giving the responsibility to the student, and I feel like a lot of the middle schoolers just decide what they give their parents and what they don't. And for you to make sure that the parent is receiving it, it should be an email or, because obviously, in the younger one, they have a homework folder, and the teacher puts up a folder, and in middle school, that's obviously not the case, but. Just something.
Good to know.
So this testing coming up is only fifth and eighth, but the one that just happened was what through what?
Three through eight.
Three through eight.
Yep.
I remember last month at our meeting, you talking about how much training it was going to take for the staff, just because of the security, because of the strict rules of this particular test and everything, and it sounded pretty crazy.
They were super good about it. I did a room audit on Friday and only found a few things, left all sticky notes, and then on Monday, did another room audit to make sure everything was, and everybody was all ready to go, yeah.
We recommended that teaching peers go into other people's rooms, because if it's your classroom, sometimes you don't even see what's on the wall, which you live it every day. Have a teaching partner come in and walk around and try to find some of them, people might be considered an instructional aide, that you might not consider an instructional aide. If it's questionable, cover it up or take it down. And then Patty did the final walkthrough.
But the teachers.
Well, they also didn't.
The ed techs were amazing.
Right, and they didn't, it was one of those typical situations where, you know, you could have killed the messenger, but that wouldn't help. This is all state, we really don't have anything to do with it, and they were very kind to Patty, understanding that.
They did not kill the messenger.
They would, no, I mean, it wasn't like Patty had a lot of control over what the testing security was, what was given to us, and did an excellent job, so.
They were very good, very good to me.
I have two other things briefly. One of them, I have this, which some of you may have seen, and CJ talked about it a little bit, I showed up Monday morning on my bike after ringing my bell, going by Jeanette's house.
You got a new bell?
Ringing bell. When I pulled in at about quarter to seven, there's a sign that says, "Thank you, teachers", and I'm like, ah, and there's some nice, you know, little like happy apples under it and some colorful things, and I'm like, who did that? So then I come around to the back, I hadn't been out front yet, do my thing, take my shower, get ready, bell rings quarter to eight, I'm out front, I walk outside, and I'm like, wow, this is the front of the school. And I sent a photo out to you people, folks, what it was, it was great. And that was the PTG that had come and secretly decorated the place and took, has this, super crafty, because I'm like, where'd you get the letters for the sign? They said they came in because it's unlocked. They figured out what the message was before, which would have been like, thank you, the budget passed, figured out what the letters were. A really nice little sign for the teachers, because they didn't have access to any more letters. And then I'm like, I think it was Amanda Wunsch, I'm like, so where are the rest of the letters? And she goes, right here, and they walked in. It was great. So just to give you a rundown of what they've done for us. Monday was muffin day, homemade muffins, variety. Tuesday was trail mix Tuesday, that was my lunch, make your own trail mix. Wellness Wednesday was tea, snacks, and spot samples, oh my. Thursday, today, was keep your eye out for a gift in your teacher mailbox, a couple of things that are pretty cool. And tomorrow is Fiesta Friday, Taco Bar. So it's been a really fun week, and we were very surprised, so thank you to the PTG, they are awesome. The last one is something that just occurred to me this week, I was looking at my calendar for next month, and the school committee meeting is the second Thursday of the month. I'm going to be taking the seventh grade on a trip, so I won't be available. So I'm going to make some suggestions, maybe have you look at your calendar so that we can have our June meeting prior to school dismissing, versus pushing it out a week, because the following Thursday, of course, is graduation at AES. So at the June committee meeting, I'll give you all the dates to end the year, I won't do that now, because one of them is, we have to determine when you want the June school committee meeting, and I would recommend, I would recommend either the sixth or the seventh, that would either be a Tuesday or a Wednesday instead of the Thursday. I leave Thursday morning early with the kids.
The seventh would work for me.
The seventh?
That's a Wednesday, the only thing I ask is, I know that's also selectmen's meeting, is there any conflict? I'll let the chair or the board decide. Sometimes we have to go there, but I don't know that I need to. Okay.
The seventh sounds good.
Okay. Okay, generally, Wednesdays, we don't be, I'm good with the night before we leave.
So June 7th will be our?
5:00 P.M.
It'll be 5:00 P.M. on a day before, just because of my availability. And we're leaving Thursday, we'll be back Friday night. So we'll make a note in our auto calls, because right now, the auto call is set up to let the community know that it's going to be on the seventh, so I'll let Amanda know to change that and send that out.
From the eighth to the.
Excuse me, from the eighth to the seventh at 5:00 P.M.
Great.
All right, perfect. And that's it for my report, thank you.
Eight to the seventh, so bringing it back.
Go back to Wednesday, yeah.
Just bring it back.
So force that off.
Erase it, I see. I got roped into coaching girls lacrosse, so we have a game on Thursday. So that works out better. It works out better for me, so.
There you go.
We have a game on Tuesday and a game on Thursday, so thank you for making it work.
Thanks, everybody, that works out great. So we'll have our school committee the first week, as we usually do, just a different night. That's it, thank you. Second week, different night.
Okay, so do you have any questions for any of the other administrators of their reports? Or you have Patty?
I didn't have a question, but I did just want to comment on seeing that Holly Hartley is leaving Sanford.
Yeah, what was that?
So.
She's retired.
Good for her, she'll be missed. Done a lot to help us.
Surprising. And you like them?
I do, I thought, they were, we were tied between two, and they survived.
Good.
I'm looking at this paragraph here. School budget passed, and then the other one underneath here about, Saturday night, school committee meeting, I will be asking for a motion to amend the current article.
It's later on, it's later on.
Oh, it's in here, all right.
It's under new business.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'll address that.
Well, you know, I know, but I thought that was all taken care of, everybody was up there talking about whatever they were talking about.
Well, we can discuss that, I'll add some clarity to that when we get that agenda item.
Clarify, yeah.
All right. Anybody else got any questions? I noticed, too, on the Alice training, that I think it was Patty had it in her report about, oh, you have it in your report, that the teachers are going to be trained on the new radios.
We did that last, they had their new radios for four to six weeks, and last night, or yesterday afternoon, we went over the protocols with the radio. Many of the staff are used to radios because of recess and other things.
Right.
Many are not. I mean, I have it in every learning space, there's one in the kitchen, or any place that somebody can work or that we would shelter in place, any vacant classroom has a radio. So we spent time yesterday with Officer Jordaine and myself going over radio protocols, and then we got into counter after that.
Good. All right, then, let's move on to, if you don't have, if nobody has any more questions, then we'll move on to committee reports. And we've got a couple from the policy committee, one to, one for, new one for a first reading, and two up to update as of today.
So I have a question on the first one, which is the first reading. Just at the bottom, because this is weapons in the school, the procedures, so we didn't have procedures before, but we had the weapons in school policy, but anyway. At the very bottom, such regulations are also to include appropriate rules, sanctions, and procedures regarding violence and/or use of weapons by employees, visitors, or other persons in addition to students. So we do have a visitor sometimes, who's a police officer, so he would not be.
No, it's fine. It's, police officers are exempt. According to Title 17A, it's criminal to bring a firearm onto school grounds, unless if you're a sworn police officer. Indeed, so as you know, Maine is a concealed carry state without a permit. A lot of people do, that's great, you just can't do it at a school. There's other venues you can't do it to, and the school is one of them, unless if you're a police officer.
So the policy committee, you want to say anything about these, or?
Like these were brought up because?
Just a.
This is a, this is a new one.
We're in J.
They're working down the alphabet.
It's new, but it never had, so Mike and I, as I mentioned before, disclaimer, we're kind of going in and we're figuring out this database of policies, and we've done a good job straightening out some things that we weren't sure of, but J-C-I-C-R was there, but didn't have a date on it, am I correct? Right, that's why it's a first reading. You probably saw it, and it goes back prior to my time, these are decades, so it's 10 years old. 10 years ago, for some reason, it either didn't get voted on, or it didn't get recorded or something, so we're making sure it does this time. As a first read, your second read will be included. The rest are just reviews.
And they also kind of encompass each other, so it was just a good, we're going to get all the views out of the way. And they're already pretty much taken care of, so it's been an easy revision for everybody.
So look for.
Well, all right, you want to stop there, because I have something on the last one, 7.1.3.
Well, let's take J-C-I-A for the first reading. Look for a motion to approve that one, or as a first reading.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, go ahead, Mary. Got something on the other one, she said?
No, you can do the next one, I don't have anything on that personally.
Okay, so the second one is J-I-C-I-A, weapons, violence, bullying, and safety, and that is a review, just to be updated and adopted as of today. Have any questions on that one?
Looks like there was only the one change, you got to get rid of the no child left behind act, which doesn't exist.
Again, I think we just also keep going through and changing superintendent or principal to superintendent slash principal, those kinds of, I don't think we get that on this one.
Probably didn't get that.
Oh, yeah.
We usually do.
Because it does say right under disciplinary action, principals may discipline, but I guess it doesn't matter.
And then there was one word, administrator. Where was the administrator word?
Right, we made some changes there, because administrators can discipline. What's interesting is, under law, the only person who can suspend a child is in the superintendent, it's the principal. Now, the principal can designate other people to do that, such as the assistant principal, but the authority to suspend a student is only given to the principal, not the superintendent. Just interesting, and nothing in this is in conflict with that. We could use, we could say the word, what we went with was designate. That's where, you know, basically Patty has the ability to do that as my designees, the principal, which is kind of how it works.
Well, I mean, you could amend it, CJ, by saying wherever it says superintendent, we're going to rewrite it superintendent, principal. Did you want to do that?
Yeah.
I don't care either way.
You probably, with what John just said, that the principal is the one that does the suspensions, that's why it's specified out that way.
Superintendent could modify it, that's what it says, could be modified by the superintendent.
You're talking, Mary, about the first paragraph where it says, the superintendent shall be responsible. Because that's the only place it says superintendent. It does say superintendent and principal later, when you get to B towards the end. That's the only two places I see, otherwise, it talks about principals, which should.
On the flip side of that, it talks about principals and then, that the.
Second paragraph, under disciplinary action.
Right.
Yep.
Superintendent's on a case-by-case basis.
And then, under psychological evaluation, it says the superintendent, then it says in the second paragraph there, the superintendent.
Because, because, because here we go again, so you have, this is interesting, because you have superintendent and principal sitting here as one. Superintendents can make a recommendation for expulsion, principals can't. Principals can suspend, superintendents can't. So I have an interesting position in that I'm representing two positions. We've never, we have never had an expulsion that I've been aware of here, and if we did, well, maybe we did, but we haven't since I've been here, how's that? To get to expulsion, you need a recommendation from me to you, and you expel, not me. from me to you, and you expel, not me. I make a recommendation. And it's kind of like a closed-door thing with the parent and the child, and what'd you do? The only place where there's no latitude for the school committee is a firearm issue. If a student were to bring a firearm to school, under federal law, the school committee must expel. You don't have a choice. Then there's the however. What would the school committee like to do for restorative for this young man or woman who made that mistake? You might put him in an alternative program. You might do home tutoring. You might do other things. The only time you have to expel is if a child brought a firearm to school. Otherwise, if we had a student who was always habitually causing a lot of problems and harming people, and we did everything we could, and I brought you that child to expel, you can expel for the rest of the school year with conditions to come back the following year if you go out and do these six or seven things to help yourself be a better person in our community. So fortunately, we really haven't had, I've been down this road before, but not here, which is good. Because for the most part, things are good around here. We don't have heavy-duty behavior issues that some school committees need to wrestle with. You know, every month, they might have a kid on their roster that they got to talk to with a parent about being expelled from school because of the level of behaviors. So I sit in an interesting position. And that's why the word principal needs to be in some places and superintendent in another, because the authority rests in those two positions.
Yeah.
Given what the situation is.
It needs to be left alone where we are.
Yeah, makes sense. Although I did find we missed one. It says, the very first sentence is the school board, and we missed to change that to committee.
That would be a good one to change.
I have a strikeout.
Oh, it's not in here.
I'm a digital copy. I have a strikeout.
I think I saw it somewhere else. So just say that wherever it says board.
Yeah.
But we usually do cap those. Maybe it just didn't print that way?
Yeah, no, yeah. It's on my screen right in front of me right now.
Yeah. So right before where it says staff slash student training and procedures, right before that, it says, local boards may want to consider adding the following paragraph to this policy to address this. Now, that probably came from the lawyers, and we didn't, the parag, is the paragraph there? I don't know.
Probably from a school management that does a boilerplate of almost all of our policies.
That was a boilerplate. So I think-
That's a boilerplate right there.
We might need to just-
So does that sentence just not need to be there?
Yeah, I'm not seeing that. Where are you seeing?
Okay, so maybe we have a, maybe our copy was not-
Over the weekend at the right, I hope the right one went out. I'm looking at mine. It looks fine.
Oh, yeah. No, it's still here on this. So maybe the strikeouts and the things that you did printed the original somehow.
No, yeah, it's, um-
Yeah, no, we talked, we talked about that, and it didn't-
That you sent me.
Yeah. So you would eliminate that.
So where was the other, what is that by?
So on the second page of it, way at the bottom, just above the bolded staff slash student training and procedures.
I can make a recommendation.
Hold on. I will send you the-
Mike, hold. What I'd recommend is, we probably won't have a June policy meeting, as I mentioned to you and Jeanette about this, CJ. This isn't pressing. These are reviews. We did this once before when we got caught, and which copy went out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Print off of there.
Next month, we'll make sure everybody's marching to the same drum, because this is part of, I don't call frustration, but the mechanics of this policy piece that kind of got dropped. And we're trying to pick up the pieces. And even here, after we thought everything went out, there's questions with the board, which is a little embarrassing. So let's table it, get it right, do it next month.
Okay. Look for a motion to table policy J I C I A until our next meeting.
So moved.
One second.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And that brings us to-
All right, I just had a spelling issue, unless you had corrected that, too.
A one J I C I.
Yep. Yeah, it was just the first sentence, all the way, and there's a lot of commas. So after all persons are prohibited from the following conduct at all time. Is it all time? At all times? At all times? On school premises? You think times instead of time?
Kind of times.
Time. Time or times.
So just add an S.
Add an S.
All times.
Yep.
If that's it, I'd recommend you take it with that amendment. We don't have to table that.
Any other questions about J I C I? Look for a motion to accept file J I C I by just amending it to put an S on time, so it's at all times, and to be adopted, updated as of today.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Let's make a point of order, so we get this right. Jennifer, would you make sure that's an amendment? I thought the times versus time. We need to make that amendment. And also the fact that 7.12 got tabled. That 7.12 got tabled. So that I can put it on, so I can put it on next month, and Jennifer, I don't want to miss it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, planning, didn't meet. None. So we'll go on to new business.
Okay.
At the 8-1, we have resignations.
I have two resignations this month. Written resignations from Jenica Goslin and Elizabeth Higgins for you to accept and vote on.
What teachers were they?
Jenica Goslin and Elizabeth Higgins.
What?
Kindergarten and middle social studies.
Kindergarten, Goslin, and Elizabeth Higgins, 6 through 8, social studies.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to accept the resignation of Jennifer Goslin.
Jenica.
Jenica.
Yeah, J E N I C A.
J E N I C A.
I move, so moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor? And who was the second one?
Elizabeth Higgins.
Elizabeth Higgins. I can write that down. So I'll look for a motion to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Higgins as 6 through 8, social studies teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by CJ, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All in favor? I thank them for their service here at the Acton Elementary School, and for being a part of our Acton Elementary School community.
A2, I recommend you just take an aggregate, and I'll explain who they are. I don't think you need individual votes, because it's continuing contracts. So these are people that have done two years of probationary, and we're moving them next year into a continuing contract situation here at the school. Those three teachers, if you take them in aggregate as a motion, are Kelsey Lizotte Johnson, Jamie LeClaire, and Megan Goodwin.
Okay. So look for a motion to move those three teachers to continuing contracts.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, A3, amendment, designated capital repairs.
This is what Jeanette was getting at earlier. I'm going to pass this out. Paula has a lot of background material. We'll hold right now. If we don't need the background material, we'll just keep it. Otherwise, we'll share it with you. We'll see where the discussion goes. Judy and I worked on this with Paula on Monday. Let me try to give you a little background on this article, as it is written. We have an article that was submitted to the selectmen for the upcoming, there's a June secret ballot vote coming. I'm unaware of the exact date, but it's the next time the townspeople will vote.
June 9th, June 10th.
Is it June 10th? And we have on the-
No, that's a town meeting, so it's going to be just before that.
When the election-
That's when we, that's when we vote on this, is it? Town meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, so what, town meeting is the town?
Yes.
That's the date.
Okay.
Okay. What we, where we were heading to, and what we wrote, was to see if the town, and what we submitted to the selectmen, is to see if the town will appropriate the sum of $75,000 from the town's unexpended funds. This has been revised and changed to see if the town of Acton will appropriate the sum of $50,000 from the schools' unexpended funds moved over. So the only thing that's changed is where's it coming from and the amount. So I gave you the background on that. Now, if you have questions as to the why, Paula and I have been working on this.
Well, I'll tell you right now, it's because there was like $5 million leftovers, what we were hearing, in the town's bucket of money. So I thought it should come from the town, not the school.
I agree. And the reason that I so strongly agree is because in the past three years, with our budget process, we have turned about $1 million back to the town from when we, one year it was a little over $700,000, and the last couple of years, it's been over $200,000 each year. So we've given, we've given that money back to the town. When we give it back to the town, we give it back, hopefully, so that it will be some tax relief for the people. But the town takes it, and they put it in their undesignated fund.
Which could go anywhere.
Which can go anywhere. So I thought it wasn't, it wasn't asking too much to ask for them to take $75,000 out of their account, since we had put so much into their account. And since we, the process that we're on, we work within a margin of how our percentages in our undesigned, I mean, we've got a pretty, we've got a very straightforward financial policy. And we follow the rules of the state as to what percentage of that we can keep and so forth. So, I mean, if we had an extra $50,000 in our undesigned account at the time of our budget process, we probably would have given that back to the town. But we didn't have that extra $50,000, because we have to look ahead for the next three years. And by the end, our balance is high right now, and that's what they said. They said, you've got plenty of money in your undesigned account, so take it out of yours. Basically, that's what they-
We haven't paid all the bills.
Well, basically, that's what they said. But, but they don't really, Paula did an awesome job going up and working with Tom and trying to explain to Tom what our policy is.
I'll go explain. I'll tell him exactly where money is supposed to come from. That's what we agreed. We voted on this.
That's right. Don't they have three selectmen?
They do.
Well, where's the other two?
They defer to the selectmen to see if we would be willing to go and ask it from the schools to the, so I brought it forward.
And how did it get to $50,000 instead of 75?
Because if we're going to take it out of ours, we really can't, Paula can explain that rather than that.
Okay, so let's go, let's go to the detail level. It sounds like we should probably do that. Go ahead. Yeah. This is well done. It's very easy to understand. It's all about finance.
This is pissing me off.
I know.
So if you look at the 2122s, that's where I had to start from.
True.
And it all equals our audit, the $1,044,639. That's our unassigned fund balance. And then you see for this year, we're asking for 296. We did ask for 296, which brings it to 748. And then 200,000 next year, which will bring it to 548. And then I just went ahead and said, well, if you ask for another two, so we're down to 348. And we have three years to spend this money because of COVID. They, we have, as long as our balance is between 5% and 9%, which if you see, if you look below, what it needs to come in between. So by the end of the third year, we're definitely within our policy.
So are we above our policy right now?
We are.
Okay.
But we have three years to spend that because of, we had all this extra money.
And that's true, that's true of every school department over the next, what is it, three years, and it's 5% to 9% or our book odds.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're well within policy. And it just comes down to where shall we ask for it to come from? So that's where we are today. You're right. We did, you're right, Mary. We did vote on this. This did get moved forward, and it was asked, and I bring it back for reconsideration.
Yeah, but how come at the top, it says Tuesday, May 2nd?
We will have to probably-
That's when we signed it, love?
Yeah.
That wasn't on this-
Was that when?
On this vote, May 2nd. That wasn't listed?
No.
No, not at all?
No.
Okay.
May 2nd was our school budget.
No, this, this is going on the regular town warrant to be voted on at the town meeting on June 10th.
Was it supposed to be on the school?
No.
No? It never was?
No, at that time, no. I have, Judy and I sent a letter to the selectmen explaining this. And at the very bottom, I explained, you know, people look at a million seven and say, look at all the money you're sitting on. Remember, and I don't have this in front of me, there's some money that are in reserve accounts, $150,000 in special needs students. So if a student with a lot of need shows up to town, Sharon's like, this person just moved to town. It's not in the budget. We have that. We had $75,000 in capital reserve repair. We spent it on a roof. We moved that money to spend on a roof. The school board can do that. The school committee can do this. The school committee did. Which brings our balance down to $15,000 or something like that. We do have some refund money coming in from our lighting project through efficiency main. We haven't seen that revenue yet, but that's money, that's money with the news. Yeah, so we're working on that, Jeanette. So that's coming.
I'm still waiting.
Point being is, there's some coming in, some going out. So when we were asked by the selectmen, what can you do? I asked Judy to meet with Paula and I, and I said, made some recommendations, let's back it down to $50,000, because we know that efficiency main money will come at some point out of the schools. And would $50,000 mess up or implicate at all our policy, our 5% to 9%? Not really. It doesn't, it doesn't take us back a lot. So really now, what we're down to is the fundamentals of the decision of where should it come from? And I'll tell you, from what I've, working with Jennifer Rue, and working with the selectmen, it's pretty clear that the message is that they'd like to see it come from the school. And I'm listening to Mary, and I'm hearing the message is it should come from the town. I'm just sitting here in the middle, trying to find out which route you want to go. If you vote this up, we'll forward it over on Friday morning, amend it with all the dates right and all the numbers right, to say, can Warren Finance look at this on Monday at your meeting? Get that approval. School board, school committee would have already approved it. Then it goes off to the selectmen. I don't see any resistance there, because this is what they asked for.
But we've already approved the one for the 75.
Because you already approved it, you would need to make a motion to amend it to this, just changing where it's coming from. If you don't approve it, then guys-
The Warren and Finance is the one who said, up it to 75.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct. So it's, I know, I was at every one of these meetings.
They would agree with us.
Well, whatever is decided has to be decided now, because the Warren Finance Committee is meeting on Monday. And they're going to approve the whole, the whole warrant for the town meeting. And then the selectmen are going to approve it on Wednesday night. So whatever is approved, whatever's going to be in there, needs to be at the town hall by tomorrow, because the Warren Finance Committee is getting the warrant on Monday night. And they have to vote, they have to vote on it Monday night. They have to vote what their recommendations are. And then the selectmen will approve the warrant and sign the warrant on Wednesday. And then it's a done deal at the town meeting.
All right. So can I ask Paula first? Just, this non-spendable fund balance of $90,000, that's the stuff we put aside for a tuition problem, a special, what is that?
The $90,000 is prepaid items we set aside in the audit, because I went by the audit. So this is how the audit broke it down. It's just prepaid items that we have set aside. So they are designated for a purpose. So we can't touch that.
It's a liability.
The reserves are in the $635,000.
So how much money do we have in our special accounts each?
635.
That's what that, the 635 is?
The total $635,000 in reserve accounts for various needs.
Right, that we put aside. Okay. So how did, so what did I say?
The $1,044,000 is our unassigned fund balance at the end of 2022.
Okay, so that, that doesn't include the $635,000?
No, that's the unassigned.
Also, I think it's important, in the letter that Judy and I sent to town, is that $296,000 of the unassigned fund balance, so to speak, from the school, is already in salaries and insurance and the running of the school and the world that we live in right now. As of today, 296 is committed to everything that's going on in this building.
Yeah.
The voters just approved next year's budget, and that is 200,000. So 200 plus 296 is 496. Let's call it a half million. So already, a half million is encumbered in the operational budget to teach and learn here. The voters are already, so you can take a big number, but if you look at that big number, that's one thing. But the word encumbered means it's targeted and already voted and approved to go to something. So almost half of that is already off the table, is what I was trying to get at. And that was the point of our letter, is you can look at a number and say, oh, my gosh, that seems huge. But when you break it down and say, but some of this is already committed to these things, it's not as big as it looks at firsthand. We agree on the numbers. At first, there was an issue on whether we agreed with the numbers they were giving us. And then it's like, our audit says this, and your audit says that. And it got a little weird. And it got a little weird, but then we finally got to a place where the numbers were, and then it became policy. Now it's simply philosophy. And that's why I give it back to you. If you vote this up, it'll probably move forward, no problem at all. If you vote this down, we'll send over this, just the way it is, and say, this is where the school committee is on this, and it'll have to play itself out.
At town meeting.
I have to say, as, as a taxpayer, going to that town meeting that we had recently about investing funds and hiring a separate accountant, which was just somebody that Tom found, I, I have concerns about how they handle the money. So it kind of bothers me that we had this agreed on to bring the town funds, which Judy pointed out, we turn this money back to help the taxpayers every year. It bothers me that they want to change it now, now that we've already got it, you know, we voted on it and, and they were kind of agreeable to it.
Told us to vote it.
You know, and now they're changing their mind, wanting us to change it.
They who? The other two selections?
The selectmen.
All three of them?
Whichever selectman is speaking of it.
That's right.
But, but as a school board member, I want it to be the easiest thing for you guys to deal with. But I feel like it, it really should have been coming out of the town funds.
So at the end of the day, we, we have all but flattened, not flattened, but we've depleted our emergency funds for the bill.
Yeah.
You moved money as you should to the roof. So if we need, if we have a catastrophic something or other, and we, and this, this just dies, say nothing gets forwarded to the town. There is no ballot to refill the reserve. It's just flat. If we don't have a fifteen thousand dollar bill for something that breaks, we're great. If we have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
We have to go to the town for a vote.
That's exactly right. And what was conveyed to me was, if you get in that position, then, quote, the town has always supported the school. And I believe that's probably true. I'm trying, I'm doing my best to sit right in the middle here and let you discuss. This is your vote. I will follow your lead and walk through the process. But we've done all the work, and at this point, this is what it's down to.
Well, we've always had very clean audits, very clear budgets. So that speaks well for, for our side of things.
Well, I'll make a motion that we do not amend Article Two, written on this piece of paper.
We want to leave it to the seventy-five.
Did you withdraw?
Seventy-five.
Two from there?
We haven't done anything.
You haven't done anything, right?
Nope.
Okay.
No, we haven't. We, we got, had to get through tonight to know what to recommend. So depending on where you go right now, I'll probably make that call on my way home to Jennifer and say, this is kind of how this went. And, um, and we're going to, you know, basically what we've sent you is what you got.
Right.
If, if you vote to change it, then tomorrow, the first thing that will happen is the amended one will go up, and that'll work through the process Monday and Wednesday as you, as you described.
So this amendment just came out of?
This week.
Selectmen.
Request.
Request. Nothing from warrant and finance reviewing it.
I haven't heard from warrant and finance. Myself, I have not.
Warrant and finance already voted on the same thing.
I need a second, and then you can have a discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have to go back and do this all over again?
I will second and we'll do, we'll include our discussion.
Do not amend Article Two. That's written on this paper.
So the motion is to?
Not.
To leave it with seventy-five.
Okay, so let me just look, let me just look at the agenda real quick. Give me just a second to make sure that we have the motion correct. The motion would have been the amendment to, so basically, the, there wasn't a motion for this amendment. Instead, it became a motion to.
Against the amendment.
Against the amendment, or, in other words, keep what we currently have. Which has already been voted on.
You could put in parentheses, keep what we have.
Because what you have has already been voted on and approved by you. So that's, you're saying, okay.
So the school, but basically, the school, what would go to the town hall is that the school committee voted to stay with their original request of seventy-five thousand.
That's correct.
From the town, the towns.
So the motion right now, though, is to reject this. So you can take a vote, and if it doesn't pass, then you're going to have to come up with a different motion. If it passes, we're not.
This is a school, school's designated capital fund, so you're going to go back to the towns?
Yeah.
Yes. Seventy-five.
So the wording, the wording is going to be completely changed.
No, the wording, here's the original, Jeanette.
Just the amount and the.
That's it. Basically, you go right back to that. That's the original. All I did was change two words. Correct.
Amend my motion to say that.
Reject the amendment?
I said reject the amendment, to not accept it. To go back to the original. Stay with the original?
Yeah.
Yeah. Stay with the original of seventy-five thousand from the town's unexpended funds.
Jennifer, I have that in writing over here. You can.
Is that better?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay.[1599.31]